Do you have any other questions? We'll take the roll.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg. Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Sunny Zia.
Aye.
Okay, 6.2, receipt of district initial bargaining proposal to LBCC slash AFT. It moved by trustee Zia, seconded by trustee Otto. Is there any comments? I have one and I have a question. In Article 6, what are employee awards?
Employee awards.
Oh, it's number 6, Article 23.
I'm trying to remember what that is. We wrote these last semester.
And I didn't talk.
Oh, yes, I know what it is.
Advice and I didn't ask you that at the time.
Yes. We have a process right now in the contract whereby if you do not, if you do not have any absences, you are awarded X amount of dollars at the end of the year. And what we want to do is modify the process so it's much more efficient for individuals. Right now, they have to request it. We want to make it automatic. That's basically going to be our proposal.
Okay. Right. It's been moved by trustee Zia, seconded by trustee Otto.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
And Sunny Zia.
What, okay. 6.3, receipt of LBCC slash AFT initial bargaining proposal to the district. Oh, so this is the response. Okay.
I'll move.
Second.
Moved by trustee Kellogg. Who wants to do the second? Okay.
I did the second. Oh, sorry.
Did you win over him?
All considered.
Okay.
Rock, paper, scissors.
Yeah, okay. Does anybody have any questions on that?
Trustee Otto seconded it.
Now I have another question on this one. Article 12, holidays, increase the number of floating holidays. How many? How many floating holidays are there now?
I believe we have one, yes.
Thank you.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
Sunny Zia.
Aye.
Okay, 7.1, new certificates and degrees.
I'll move.
Second.
Moved by trustee Kellogg, seconded by trustee Zia.
I have a question.
Yes.
Why is the associate degree in social sciences being inactivated?
I think that's Dr. Long.
Can I find where you are?
It's actually the top one on the list of 7.1.
So, that's an associate in arts degree. We have now an ADT, which is a transfer degree. And so, many of the departments are determining that it is probably better to inactivate their associate degrees in favor of the associate degree for transfers. And so, that social sciences department has made that recommendation. It's been through the process. And so, we will take that degree out of the catalog for the 17, 18 academic year. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? I have a question, Dr. Long.
Yes, Dr. Baxter.
On these welding classes that are being proposed, will this help our veterans get credit under the GI Bill for taking welding?
Yeah, so when we inactivated the welding degree, the associate degree, we still kept the welding classes. And so, we have students taking those classes with no certificate to award them. So, we had advisory committee meetings. Those advisory committees recommended these three certificates that would allow students to be, to get a living wage job. And so, this is just packaging the courses that we already have with industry recommendations so that the students can be awarded the certificates in welding.
Fantastic. Any other? Trustee Otto?
Just as an aside about all of this stuff, the chancellor's office has a very active task force right now about streamlining the process to, for new programs and new courses that they are very aggressively pursuing. It's brand-new. It comes out of the workforce, strong workforce task force. And we expect to see major changes in this area. And this is a very important area for trustees to know about, not the change, but these things, because we have responsibility for these things and ultimately have to sign off on them. And oftentimes, we just get, this is what we're doing and we do it. We're developing some training on that.
So, if I may, I am on that curriculum work group for the chancellor's office. And what we are doing is actually putting the control right back on the community colleges. And so, when we submit any new or modified course, or new or modified program is what we're looking to do in the very near future, the chancellor's office will assign a control number the next day. So, all of the complaining about the time it takes the chancellor's office to approve is put back on us. We are now accountable to make sure that the curriculum we submit is compliant, that our lecture hours, lab hours, and units match. And we had to sign a verification form as the curriculum chair and the vice president of academic affairs to verify that all of our curriculum is compliant. They're going to do some spot checking. Hopefully, we'll make that through very smoothly. But yeah, I am on that task force and it's really good news for community colleges, particularly those of us who feel confident that when we submit our curriculum, it is compliant and accurate. So, it has been a great group of people to work with.
Very good. Thank you.
He's the chancellor, he's a go-getter, isn't he?
Tell the question.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
Sunny Zia.
Aye.
Okay, 7.2, new modified and inactivated courses.
I'll move.
Moved by trustee Kellogg, seconded by trustee Otto. Any questions? Take the roll.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
Sunny Zia.
Aye.
Okay, next, 8.1, resolution, non-resident tuition fees for 2017, '18.
I'll move.
Second.
Moved by trustee Otto, seconded by trustee Kellogg. Any comments, questions?
My only question, President Baxter, is this one with the international students?
Yes.
I apologize, I'm looking over all of you because you've got our screen behind you all the time, instead of in front of us. This is for the international students, correct?
Correct.
And it is competitively.
Non-residents.
Non-resident and international.
Non-resident, I'm sorry, it's non-resident.
And international.
But the amount of 200 and whatever it was, that is essentially in line with, we're not pricing ourselves out of the market, we're in line with other colleges. Is that how you always come to this number? Is there another way of getting about it? Do you get this compensation?
I will let Vice President Miller answer that question. She has all the details.
You're correct in that typically, a district will use their own cost basis. There was an interest in keeping these fees competitive with local districts, local programs. And the recommendation of the total of 233.3 actually has us parallel two contiguous districts. And it does keep it more competitive. It would have been, if we had used the district's calculations or the statewide rate, it would have been $11 per unit more.
The point is that these are one of those type of fees that the students, just they market, they find the cheapest rate, quote-unquote. And so, I'm just glad, I just asked the question, I'm glad I had the answer already, but I just wanted to ask to make sure. Very good. Thank you very much.
I have a question on the definition of non-resident student. I have a student who has approached me and is dealing with housing instability. He was born in California, raised in California, left to Las Vegas for a year and came back and is now considered non-resident and has to pay $233 a year. I don't understand how that's possible and what's the definition? Are we essentially turning away students who could potentially be eligible for residency? What is the definition there?
Education, both education code and Title V stipulate how we define a non-resident. And you do have to live within the state of California for a year to be determined a non-resident.
For a year, so he's been born and raised here.
Yeah, the fact that they left for a year and haven't been back for a year does mean it falls them out of residency status because they left the state of California and have not been back in the state of California for a full year.
I thought that everything that happened in Las Vegas stayed in Las Vegas. Isn't that not like an exception? So, that's what it sounds like.
And that's, there's just no way that waivers or exceptions can be made?
No, not, unfortunately.
Under penalty to make sure that no exceptions are made?
We're not under penalty, but it is something that our enrollment services staff, you know, provide their due diligence. I think they try to help students as much as possible to get them out from under a non-resident tuition if they can. But when we can't, there isn't anything that we can do. It is also something that the chancellor's office requires our auditors to look at to ensure that we are appropriately classifying our non-residents as non-residents and our residents as residents.
If I may add, Madam Chair.
I think Dr. Peterson wanted to make a comment. Sorry. Oh, you were holding a microphone. Okay, go ahead. Okay. Trustee Malauulu, go ahead.
This is something that's been going on for a long time and it's frustrating. I've had students who graduate from high school in June and run off and do something for some time and they want to come back and enroll and they can't. So, or they can, but they're just going to have to pay more. So, I always advise them to start working and save up money so that they can go to school full-time when they are eligible as a resident. And sometimes, they take that advice. So, they use that gap year to work, get their residency, and then come back and become full-time students so they don't have to pay the fees and have to worry about working. And it's just, you know, it's the way it is. They graduated high school in California and they want to go travel and come back and then they just, not only at the community colleges, but it also happens at the state colleges too, which is a lot more expensive. So, it, you know, that's just always been that way.
Okay. Take the roll, please.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Sunny Zia. Aye.
Okay, 9.1, academic senate president, trustee, Vice President Long.
I can't hear your voice.
Okay, thank you. 9.2, superintendent president.
Yes, thank you. I actually have several things that I wanted to bring to the board's attention and I will try to make it quick since it is late. First off, the governor signed, or he came out with his January budget a couple weeks ago. I did send out a budget memo. Hopefully, each of the board members received the budget memo that was emailed to the entire campus community. Within the state budget, I wouldn't say it's a bad budget, but I also wouldn't say that it's a good budget. I would say that it's expected. You know, there are a minimal amount for cost of living adjustments, 1.48 percent is provided. There is some enrollment growth funds that are provided, about 1.34 percent. And there's a small amount, 23.6 million on a statewide basis, or about 4.4 percent for a base allocation increase. And those are really our three ongoing unrestricted general fund sources of revenue that we have within the budget. You know, some of the nice things that are in the budget for the community colleges is there is a new program totaling $150 million for guided pathways that will be coming out. All colleges will have an opportunity to get some of those funds, although we don't know how it's going to be determined, how much we will receive. But I'm sure we will be well on our way in order to receive some of those funds as well. The disappointing thing of the governor's budget is the fact that he did not put in there all of the capital outlay projects that the Board of Governors had approved, which means for Long Beach City College, we had two projects that were on the list that aren't currently approved. That's the M&amp; building here on this campus and it's our M&amp;N building at the LAC campus. So, it's worth about $27 million for us to get the state to approve that funding. I won't say that the fight is over yet, just because it didn't appear in the January governor's budget doesn't mean that we don't have a chance to get it in the final budget. And we will be working, and I will be working with our legislators and with Sacramento and the Department of Finance, doing everything I can possible to try to get those projects in the budget. You know, the voters passed Proposition 51. Proposition 51 provides the state the funding to approve these projects and to fund these projects. So, you know, I think we need to get the governor to approve our projects in accordance with the voters' will of California. So, that's something that we will be working on. I actually have a conference call tomorrow on this. I had one last Friday. So, like I said, it's one of my top priorities right now is to hopefully try to get our two projects in there. They are high on the priority list. So, we are, there's five different categories within the projects. The first is health and safety. We don't have anything in the health and safety category because in order to have something in the health and safety category, you can't use the building. So, all of our buildings are safe enough for students to be in. So, those three projects were funded by the governor. And then, the next priority are growth projects. And our project, which is the M&amp;N at LAC, is the fourth-ranked project on that list. The governor did not fund any growth projects. And then, the next category would be modernization, which means that we're basically upgrading the building. We're not growing in size or we're not growing in classroom space with that. Again, our project is number four ranked. The governor did pick out two projects, but it wasn't number one and number two ranked. It was number two and number six ranked. So, it's something that I think we need folks' support on. We will probably be asking for letters to be sent to the legislature. So, if anyone is interested and wants to sign on a letter, I will definitely be signing a letter. But if we want others to sign a letter and kind of inundate Sacramento with that, it'll be something that we'll be working for. That's the governor's budget. As far as FTS, I wanted to give you guys an update. We just filed our first period report on January 15th. And I am happy to say that we are projecting that we will come out of stabilization.
Oh, good. Very good. Excellent.
So, we may still have to borrow from summer, but it won't be as much, but we will be able to come out of stabilization this year. So, that is something very, very good for the college. As far as athletics, you know, our basketball teams are both going right now. I was going to give you our record, but it's a losing record, so I won't tell you that. But then, our ASB president already mentioned, there is the coaches versus cancer game on February 10th. That starts at 5:00 PM. We are playing LA Southwest. And then, lastly, I have three pieces of information that are very difficult to talk about. The first being, we had a major tragedy for two of our employees. So, the Aguero family, if you hadn't heard, on January 1st, they had a fire that devastated their entire home, which impacted our, one of our custodians, Lucy Aguero, and her daughter, Susanna Melendez. And we have sent the emails out to the campus community. The campus community has been very charitable in helping the family. And so, they are working through that. So, if you come across either one of them, just let them know that our thoughts are with them on that. And then, we've had two students who have passed away in the past month since our last meeting. The first one was a prior student who was a prior ASB president and a prior student trustee, Ryan Bulmer. He passed away on December 19th. Yes, it was very, very shocking under suspicious circumstances. He was out of the country. He has actually willed a portion of his estate to LBCC Foundation. So, he was so fond of his time and experience that he had here at Long Beach as an ASB president and as a student trustee, that he thought enough of us to leave a portion of his estate to the foundation. So, I think that was very generous of him. I knew Ryan personally for over a decade and he always spoke very highly of LBCC and, you know, what we did for him and how we helped him transfer to USC. You know, the community college community has really come through on this one. The ACBO board, as well as the ACA board, is also going to be contributing $1,000 apiece towards the endowment that's going to be established in his name. So, we will have something in perpetuity to acknowledge Ryan and his time here with LBCC. And then, the last one is a more former student, Kenya Buckner, was just murdered on January 16th. Was a former LBCC nursing student and an IITS employee. So, I would ask that at the end of the meeting, we just have a moment of silence for both Ryan Bulmer and Kenya Buckner.
Superintendent President Gabel, both trustee Otto and trustee Zia were surprised by this news. Do not the trustee, I get the email anyway, but do the other trustees not get these emails when they come out? Because I think that would be really important for them.
They go to the LBCC.edu email address, so.
I don't get a lot of these notifications. Maybe it's a different mail server for trustees. I know, I have people come up to me all the time, you know, campus-wide email went out. I don't get those. And maybe it's because I'm not a former faculty member. I don't know if trustee Kellogg or Otto gets.
What we'll do is we'll verify that both trustee Zia and, well, all the trustees, that your names appear on the LBCC all mail distribution list because you should be on there.
Yes.
I just had the question, Superintendent President Gabel, the construction, I believe that the governor was not a fan of Proposition 51. And maybe this is his way of expressing, was, did I see correctly, he only proposed five projects?
Yes, he proposed, there were 29 projects that were approved by the Board of Governors that totaled close to $750 million over the lifespan of their projects. And he proposed five projects. And he has proposed spreading out the cost over four different fiscal years. So, the entire projects have not been funded. He funded preliminary plans in the 17, '18 year. And then, in the 18, '19 year, working drawings. And then, in 19, '20 would be construction. And in 20, '21, it would be equipment. So, when it typically takes nine months to go from your plan, your preliminary plan to your working drawings, he is forcing the colleges to take 24 months to do that planning and coming up with the drawings before they can be submitted to DSA.
My only point on raising that is because, and even the location of them are somewhat unique, of where he, the five projects he picked, there seemed to be a little bit of a couple homers in there for him as far as the districts that were being served. But the point is that if that's the fight we want to take during this budget process, it was clear to me that the governor's made it very clear that what he doesn't like in the budget, and even what he did put in there, he did so reluctantly. And so, it's going to be, I think, tough sledding, but obviously, we need to make our case. But I thought that was very unique, that whole budget process and what he recommended, how he recommended it and who he recommended it for. So, anyway, we're going up to Sacramento and there are more things to discuss as well. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Superintendent President Gabel. Trustee LoMelli, I didn't forget you, 9.3.
Appreciate that, thanks. So, yeah, speaking of the governor's budget, it was just really interesting to follow along. I mean, a lot of student groups that very closely follow along with the Board of Governors recommended. And it was interesting to see that there was, you know, with the original Board of Governors recommendation, they asked for a certain pot of money for better resources and the governor decided not to allocate any resources for that. And the Board of Governors, with some student input, suggested that about $5 million would go into this, you know, food and housing insecurity that seems to be sweeping the state as of now. And there was also no allocation for that at the statewide level. So, as a student, we'll be pushing some priorities as well, but I'm glad to see that the Long Beach community here is also having their own priority. But yeah, it was interesting to see, I was, it was funny, I was up in Consultation Council actually last week with Otto. And then, we had a lot of, so the meeting was kind of facilitated by our old superintendent president. He made a quick joke at the very.
Former.
Former, thank you, former superintendent president. And he made a quick joke at the very beginning of the meeting, saying he felt like he was in Long Beach. We had Thomas in the audience as well. We had Deana Humble, who's also here. So, it was just really funny and awesome to see that Long Beach is really spread out. And then, we hear about all these different initiatives and all these task forces and, you know, advisory groups that we're part of. So, I'm always glad to see that we have representation across the board at every level of decision-making. But aside from that, it's been a busy week, or busy, how long has it been, month? Happy holidays to everyone, hope everyone had a great time celebrating. We are now a few weeks away, obviously, from the fall semester and winter session is being close to wrapping up, spring. But yeah, it's midterms for some winter session classes. Thank you to Pat McKean's class, for those of you who actually stayed around, those who might be watching the YouTube video. Yeah, they had their midterm yesterday.
Extra credit.
Yeah, they're just non-stop working, so shout out to them. And then, I'll be, in the meantime, before our meeting, I'll be obviously participating in the search committee, but I'll be attending two conferences that are trustee-related. So, I'll be attending the first one with Community College League of California with a small cohort of our trustees here. And we'll be attending their legislative conference this upcoming weekend in Sacramento. So, I'm excited for that. And then, I'll be attending the ACCT National Legislative Summit in DC, so I'm super stoked for that. What they've told me is that a student trustee in the previous time got kind of snowed in, so knocking on wood that I don't get snowed in.
You better not because it'll cost money.
There was nothing kind of about it, she was.
So, let's see how that goes. I'm really excited and it looks like it'll be a very fun and exciting time. And again, I thank the Long Beach community and the district and, you know, all the support that I've gotten and being able to even attend these conferences. So, thank you all again.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Board of Trustees, who wants to be first? Okay, trustee Kellogg.
Just very quickly, it was mentioned already with the passing of Ryan, the funeral, actually the same day as the Martin Luther King parade. And so, it was just heartbreaking and the fact I also would periodically have lunch with him to go over things about the industry and the college issues, et cetera. So, that was a difficult one, obviously. And a positive one, I'm going to leave it to President Baxter to plug the state of the college address coming up here shortly, and to our student trustee. We mentioned two events which are important because with the statewide trustee event taking place, which ironically, trustee Otto. place, which ironically trustee Otto, ironically trustee Otto is the president of that organization. And it's a critical time because we're dealing now with the budgets, as was mentioned. And then even with the ACCT in Washington DC, a lot of times, there's always one time that I find the most appropriate, and that's when you have a new administration to hopefully start to get an idea of what policies and procedures and legislation they're going to pursue that would impact higher education. So hopefully it's not only be informative, but we'll get a much better sense of the direction of our, our funding, whether it be for the national Pell Grants or other states. I'm looking forward to attending those and participating. And with that, President Baxter, I will conclude my comments for the night.